All this meeting to order. Do you need to do anything, Taylor, to start recording? I mean, roll call. Uh, sorry, I'm sitting here spaced out. Karen Cromwell.
Here.
Andy Franklin.
Here.
Ben Nguyen.
Here.
Carla Pennington Cross is here, and for the record, Danielle Bailey is excused from today's meeting because last night, I have her permission to say her wife had a heart transplant successfully. Alright, uh, anyone who wishes to can stand for the pledge allegiance?
I would like to just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Right. Moving on to item one D on the agenda, agenda approval, is there a motion?
I move to the agenda.
Second.
Uh, anyone opposed? And the agenda is approved, and item one E is a closed session.
I would like to move to convene in closed session pursuant to nineteen eighty-five point C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body have jurisdiction or exercise responsibility specifically to discuss an administrator contract. Second.
Alright, roll call vote. Uh, Karen Cromwell?
Yes.
Andy Franklin?
Yes.
Ben Nguyen?
Yes.
And Carla Pennington Cross votes yes, and we are now moving into closed session. Discussion.
I move to approve the administrator contract and discuss it in closed sessions.
Alright, uh, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, that contract is approved, and now I'm gonna talk more than I want to. I hate this mic, I'm no good at it. I'm gonna say a few things. Uh, number one, for those of you who weren't here at six, um, I thought you would like to know that Danielle Bailey, our board president, isn't here today because, with her permission, I can tell you that her wife Caitlin had a heart transplant last night. She got the call in the morning, Caitlin was in the hospital for about a week at Mayo Clinic waiting for her heart, and it came through. The surgery was a success. Um, she was coming to last I heard this afternoon, and uh, everyone is very, very optimistic, so I'm very excited to share that news with you, and um, I will wax maudlin for a moment here because listening to Danielle share about what it takes to do a heart transplant, it reminded me why we do what we do. We don't do it for forward test scores in the end, we don't do it for school report cards, we do it because we're building the dreamers and the visionaries who are gonna save lives in the future. The, you know, the supply chain experts, the doctors, the nurses, the scientists, the ethicists who work with organ transplant lists, um, the philosophers who find the courage to be organ donors and to give life even as we die, it's just an extraordinary thing. And so I just wanted to share my thoughts on that. It's after a tough year was a great reminder that this is why we're here. To build the next generation of people who are gonna be, uh, transformative, and I know our district is committed to that, so I wanted to share that. Um, we've had a lot of closed sessions, I wish Danielle could be here because she's been leading the effort to set up uh, our next, uh, path for leadership, and we've been doing a lot in closed sessions, so I am now able to report that we have officially selected a new superintendent, uh, an interim assistant business coordinator, and a new middle school principal. Um, and so I'm gonna read the announcements that will be going out, as I know people have been waiting. Um, and I'll start with, uh, the first one. We are pleased to inform you, not gonna freestyle, I'm gonna read what we wrote. Uh, we are pleased to inform you that we'll be making two important leadership changes in our district. First, we have selected Anna Young, our current middle school principal, to serve as the district's interim superintendent effective July one. Ms. Young has more than twenty years of experience in Wisconsin public schools. She's worked as a teacher, literacy specialist, associate principal, and principal. She joined our school community as the Glen Hills principal in September of twenty twenty. Ms. Young led the middle school effectively through the COVID pandemic, demonstrating her ability to make strong decisions in difficult situations. She knows our school community's interests and needs, and we feel that she's well positioned to move into the superintendency. In anticipation of her future role as superintendent, Ms. Young will immediately take the lead in our district's budget and finance work, while also finishing out the school year as our middle school principal. She will work closely with Allison Weiss, our outgoing superintendent, to come up to speed on all other district operations by July first, and we are sure it will be a seamless transition. Second, Willie Williams, currently our associate principal at Glen Hills, will be appointed to serve as our interim principal effective July one. Mr. Williams has worked in education for fifteen years in various positions from elementary to high school education. He is a proud alumnus of Morehouse College, where he fell in love with educating youth. He joined us as the associate principal in July twenty twenty-one, and has demonstrated his ability to lead our middle school effectively through culture building, consistent expectations for all. His work has spurred better family communication and more student voice. Ms. Young will continue to mentor and collaborate with Mr. Williams to ensure a successful transition in the next school year. We are excited as a board to offer these opportunities for growth and advancement to candidates who have already shown their passion and dedication to our students, who believe in empowering growth, connection, and success for all members of our learning community, and who are already embedded in the collaborative leadership work of our district. We are grateful for Ms. Young and Mr. Williams' willingness to step up and meet the needs of our district community, and we're looking forward to communicating, to collaborating with both of you to ensure that our students continue to receive an exceptional education. Thank you both for stepping up.
Thank you.
Second announcement, slightly shorter. We're pleased to inform you that the board has appointed Dr. Todd Gray to serve as the district's part-time interim assistant business coordinator effective July one. Dr. Gray served as a superintendent and business manager in Wisconsin public schools for decades. He's a highly regarded expert in the field of public school finance. We retained him as a district as a consultant in January to support and lead our work in evaluating budget challenges, problem solving and correcting financial errors, and finding solutions going forward. His experience and expertise have been invaluable so far. Excuse me, so far. In his role as interim assistant business coordinator, Dr. Gray will support and guide our business staff in developing budget forecasts, establishing financial management processes and goals, and implementing sound business practices for the district. He will also serve as a resource to the board and our new superintendent, Ms. Young. We look forward to continuing to collaborate with Dr. Gray in responding to our district's budget challenges and building a fiscally responsible path forward. There you go. And I wanna thank Allison for supporting this transition and working closely with our team, and helping to make this a smooth, smooth transition. Um, and I'm gonna say some names because I know y'all have been working super, super hard. I'm gonna forget someone, but I hope not. Anna, Willie, Todd, Gus, Kelly, April, Jenica, Aidé, Ryan, Kayla, Taylor. This is the Oscars. You all are collaborating in your leadership and work, doing what needs to be done. We all see it, y'all appreciate it, we all value you very much. Okay. Anyone else want to say anything? Alright, on to, uh, agenda item two, public comment. At this time, if anyone would like to speak on a non-agenda item, you can approach the, uh, mic and speak. I have on the signup list Jim Beckman, you wish to speak.
Here.
Anyone online?
Uh, final call for anyone online.
Alright, on to agenda item. Where am I? Three A. Student ambassador. I would like to introduce everyone to Liliana Johnston, a seventh grader at Glen Hills Middle School. She plays a large saxophone as well. And, uh, we're very pleased to have you here as our student ambassador. At this time, I would like to offer you an opportunity to speak if you wish to.
Put it right up and speak loud.
Okay, so. I'm really excited to be here, and I'm very happy that I, you've heard my third board meeting so far. Uh, a little about me is I do play saxophone, yes. I involve in a lot of activities. I'm in a positive gift program and, yeah, really it. Don't you have any questions?
I'm just, I'm really excited to have you here and have you at the table.
Thank you.
Thanks, Liliana. Alright. On to item three B. My reading glasses are letting me down. District spotlights. Um, who will speak on that? Allison?
I'll do the first two. Um, so first, we wanted to thank, do a shout out for, to Bethany Bailey. Um, it was probably two weeks ago now, she did some work over at Parkway with our counselor, Mr. Tilly, teaching about celebrating abilities and understanding invisible disabilities. Um, LinkedIn board docs are some photos and some videos of her working with classes. And so we just wanted to take the opportunity to thank her for coming in and sharing with, with the school. And then the other shout out goes to Miss Miracle for taking students to the Bucks game. Um, this is one of many opportunities she's provided her students over the last several years. This is just the most recent. So again, there are photos and some videos, LinkedIn board docs. Um, she had quite a timeline and some challenges on arrival, and they got through the metal detectors and through parking and all of that, but then they had an opportunity to do a amazing twelve-minute show, uh, before the Bucks started. And then also, she's wanted to give a big shout out to their fearless chaperones. Um, Mrs. Ms. Herkowski, Mr. Grabowski, Mrs. Young, um, who all worked with, um, getting the students there along with Principal Young, Principal Williams, JoJo, um, and I guess they played a fun game, so. So, just a huge shout out, uh, for some fun activities and opportunities for students over the last couple weeks. And then the last one, I will leave to.
We have two board members leaving us as their terms end, um, next week, I guess. And so this board was not pulled together enough to create a slideshow, given everything we've been going through, but, um, we have cake to share.
I'm so sorry.
Anyway, I kinda don't get it.
So, um, Andy, I think you may have noticed some people here who know you. Um, I'm gonna kick this off. Uh, we made certificates of appreciation. Um, I'm gonna leave these with Taylor because Danielle's not here to sign them. I'll read them for you. The first one for Ben. Uh, certificate of appreciation in recognition of your three years of service to this, uh, school district board of education. We thank you for your dedication to student achievement, your passionate support of teachers, and your commitment to evidence-based practices. You have been marked safe from this school district. Andy, a certificate of appreciation for you. Oops. Written in English, not Klingon. In recognition of fifteen, fifteen years of service in five terms on the board of education, extraordinary. And, um, this says, to make a long story short, we thank you for your passionate leadership and dedication to our community and for your commitment to student success.
And we have symbolic cakes, so we have fifteen cherries for Andy. And we have three chocolate swizzles for Ben. And there is ample to share, but I did not plan out distribution well at all, so.
Okay, uh, positors, is there anyone who would like to speak to, um, about either of these board members?
Sure, why not?
Approach the bench.
Alright. Hello, everyone. I'm Alex. This is Juliana. We are Andrew Franklin's kids, and we want to shout out, I think, how proud of who we are. Um. Hey, Dad.
Hi.
Congratulations on fifteen years of dedication and hard work. Over these years, you witnessed our growth and played a pivotal role in guiding us in our growth through different stages. We walk away to Glen Hills, shaping our paths to where we stand today. Despite facing various challenges, you've tackled them with remarkable resilience, showcasing your genuine care for our community through your achievements. I vividly, gee, I vividly recall the first time I discovered you were on the board. On my kindergarten's birthday amidst nervousness, I searched for my parents in the crowd of people. Across the room, I saw you engaging with teachers and administrators, a moment that made it proud and cool to have a dad on the board. A memory etched in my mind. Our journey continued with the two of us attending numerous board meetings of students representing programs like middle school robotics and the future city teams. Though not always my favorite activity, your insightful and humorous contributions made that meeting much more memorable, showcasing your support and understanding of our endeavors. Despite the recent challenges, witnessing your innovative solutions to keep our school thriving has been inspiring. Your unwavering commitment to the Glendale River Hills School, School District, even appearing on TV at times, has been remarkable. While immense on late nights, we're immensely proud and grateful for your dedication and eagerly anticipate what comes next. Thank you, Dad, for all the hard work and support. We're so excited to see what's to come.
Thank you.
Can I, remember us, and your wife? Good kidding. Speaking of which, our mom unfortunately could not be here, she's on a business trip. So, um, instead, I'm gonna read what she wrote. So, here we go. Dear Andy, as your time on the Glen Hills Representatives Board draws to a close, I want to express my sincere gratitude for your service. School board service is a cuffed-on duty role, and you took on your school board duties with dedication, grace, professionalism, and a great sense of pride for addition. I remember what I even said. We didn't even have kids in school yet, so you wanted to be a part of this community. You wanted to be a part of the school, and you wanted to make a difference. You made it by your ability to connect to people. I see that more than anybody else. I see how much time and effort you put into this work as a school board member. Countless hours, weekends, weekday nights, time away from our families, but I understand that it was very important to you and needed. And I thought that you were also very good at what you do. I want to comment about your leadership style and your willingness to find a solution. No matter how difficult the situation was, and over the last fifteen years, we had a lot of difficult situations. You were always there to straighten it out, support from the school board colleagues and administration. I know that you will miss working as a board member, but I know that our schools are not really being considered. Thank you for your fifteen years of service, and welcome back to the Bailey.
Anyone else? I have something to say. To each of you.
I do too.
I bet you do.
I do.
I'll start with Ben, so he doesn't feel left out. And I know Danielle would have something to say. Um, but this is actually earnest, mostly. I wanna thank you, Ben, for opening my mind, thinking about evidence in teaching and curriculum and education. Um, it's your fault that I've read Patty door-to-door, and it was very eye-opening, and, um, I wouldn't have done that if not for you, so I'm incredibly grateful to you for that. Your Hattie effect on me is probably statistically significant, but I don't have longitudinal data yet. So I hope someday to give you some year-over-year data to let you know what impact you've had on me, but so far, it's looking good. So thank you, I'm gonna miss you on the board. Um, Andy? I have something to say to you, but I have to find it. My pronunciation is not tip-top. But I know what I'm saying. It's Klingon.
Oh, I, I would like to make a note that the computer detected that that was not English. It's giving me a prompt to confirm that we're speaking English.
I won't open this one. As you know, I'll open more. Well, here we are. At fifteen years, this is probably my last meeting. As of Glendale, we'll board my, it's Wednesday, you never know. We have Sunday night, so let's just call it Mr. Franklin's office. No doubt, you've all got in your hands on a copy of the secret screenplay I've been working on all this time called The Board. Uh, Bad Education, Carla, was already taken. It's about a young lawyer stumbling his way onto elected office as school board member, takes on the hierarchy. I'm sure you're all planning a surprise, uh, afterwards. Uh, try table reading, probably, because you got a copy of the script if you wanna, you know, enact it, but, uh, I promise to have surprise, please, whatever you do, you know, drum line. Fifteen years go by pretty quickly, while a lot has changed, a lot stayed the same. We're fortunate to live in a diverse community that supports public education, and we say that a lot. Uh, but truly, our diversity in this district is an asset, all the way from top to bottom. I'm humbled our voters granted me the opportunity to serve these by term, and I look forward to continuing in my community that they have the last two years, my capacity as a middle-class high school board member. But I have a strength, these schools have the best staff, and these schools, I mean, Glendale River Hills, uh, good, it's, it's such a good staff here, Parkway and Glen Hills, uh, staff and teachers do the best, bar none. I was happy as a parent to trust all of you, my children, for their education. And as to the board, over the last fifteen years, I've served with the governor, so different board members, and I've learned something from each and every one of them. Right now, we have the best school board. And I've said this last one many times before, and many times, uh, and with many different other board members. But you guys, okay? I really need it. You're the best one, really. Uh, but look, we've gone through the fire, what we've done together, we've become a stronger. I'm proud not only how hard this board has come, but that I've been able to be a part of it and contribute in some way. The budget crisis has been challenges, but we'll always have budget challenges. We'll always have challenges, period. Public service is a roller coaster. At ten, juvenile prisoners, referenda, COVID, it may feel like a new frontier, but it's insurmountable. But when you look behind you, you'll see how hard you've come. Hopefully, I've learned and grown along the way, so public service may be a roller coaster ride, but I'm glad I've strapped in with you guys. As I leave, we've gotten a greater handle on current budget plans, and they're laying a path forward with the district's longevity with great leadership in place. We put the right people in place to lead the district going forward. And as we've gotten that greater handle on the budget challenges, now is really the moment, it's a great time to bring fresh perspective to the district with Katie and Chris. Change after all is an opportunity to grow. So, new board members mean adjustment, and that's something to take under advisement. And so therefore, I offer this lesson from the shoveler and the mystery man. He recognized we've struck down challenges with the mighty sword of teamwork and the hammer of not bickering. So, as long as you guys be putting students first, the stars will be in your favor. You're all stars in my book, so thank you very much.
I didn't follow that out.
So, uh, I, I do have a lot of appreciation for this, uh, district. Uh, I was a student here. Uh, I was a teacher here. I uh, I'm on the school board here, and I'm a community member here. Uh, I've met a lot of great students here, uh, and a lot of great staff members here. Um, one of my students is here, you know, and it was, it was fun, a lot of fun teaching them. So, uh, interestingly enough, you know, as I am out, out and about in the community, uh, I run across former students. One time, this, I think it was this past summer, I went into my elevator at work and and pops in this former student of mine, I was doing an internship, uh, and that was a lot of fun reconnecting with them. Um, so really, yeah, I have nothing but positives things to say about, uh, the students I taught here. Um, also the staff members here, uh, the ones I've worked with, uh, played a pivotal role in my career. Natalie Block, uh, Michael Krueger, Mike Birmingham, uh, Rob Bladum, uh, Mark Wagner, he still teaches here. And those, those people are great. Um, and it was a lot, it was great work with them. Um, you know, this district, as Andy was alluding to, you know, there have been difficult times before, uh, and, you know, Glendale River Hills is nothing but resilient, so, uh, I think the staff here is incredible, the teachers are incredible. Uh, and I think the, the leadership going into next year is gonna do a good job, so.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen, and in the passing of the torch, the next item on our agenda, item three C is the oath of office for our new school board members, Katie Avalos and Chris Robinson.
Okay, um, we're gonna, in all fairness, we're gonna go alphabetically by last name. So, it means, it means Katie Avalos will come over.
Do I need my ID now?
Oh, no, you don't need your ID yet.
Okay.
If you wanna just stand right in front of the table. Thank you. Alright, and so, um, I'm gonna be administering our official oath of school board members, um, in compliance with section one twenty point oh six, part ten, um, abiding by the laws of the state of Wisconsin and the county of Milwaukee. So Katie, if you could please raise your right hand. What? Okay, repeat after me. I, Katie Avalos.
I, Katie Avalos.
Who have been duly elected.
Who have been duly elected.
To the school board of the village of River Hills.
To the school board of the village of River Hills.
And the city of Glendale.
And the city of Glendale.
For a three-year term.
For a three-year term.
Commencing on the twenty-second of April.
Commencing on the twenty-second of April.
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four.
But have not yet entered.
But have not yet entered.
Upon the duties thereof.
Upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge, and will faithfully discharge, the duties of said office, the duties of said office, to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Alright, next, alphabetically, we'll get Ms. Karen Cromwell. Please raise your right hand.
Sorry, I didn't mention you.
Please raise your right hand. I, Karen Cromwell.
I, Karen Cromwell.
Who have been duly elected.
Who have been duly elected.
To the school board of the village of River Hills.
To the school board of the village of River Hills.
And the city of Glendale.
And the city of Glendale.
For a three-year term.
For a three-year term.
Commencing on the twenty-second of April.
Commencing on the twenty-second of April.
Twenty twenty-four. But have not yet entered. Oh, well, actually, she probably doesn't need to, I'm sorry. Uh, we're gonna skip that part. Uh, I will support.
I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Alright, and then finally, Ms. Chris Robinson.
I, Chris Robinson.
I, Chris Robinson.
Who have been duly elected.
Who have been duly elected.
To the school board of the village of River Hills.
To the school board of the village of River Hills.
And the city of Glendale.
And the city of Glendale.
For a one-year term.
For a one-year term.
Commencing on the twenty-second of April, twenty twenty-four.
Commencing on the twenty-second of April, twenty twenty-four.
But have not yet entered.
But have not yet entered.
Upon the duties thereof.
Upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully. And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. Thank you. All right, welcome to our three duly elected school board members. Um, and onward to agenda item for the consent agenda. Well, we're waiting for Karen to come back. I'll give her about sixty seconds.
How was my presentation? How was my reading?
It was awesome.
Thank you. I know you are. All right, looking at the consent agenda, is there a motion?
Zoom.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes on to item five A on the agenda, loan and referendum next steps.
Um, did we, I'm sorry, are we skipping items four, did I just miss it?
Uh, we just approved items four of the consent agenda.
So then are we on four B?
Uh, no, the consent agenda is items four, A, B, C, and D altogether.
Got it, okay, thank you.
All right, item five A, loan and referendum next steps.
So Kevin's here from Bear, uh, to walk us through next steps, thank you for joining us.
Thanks, and, uh, happy to be here in person again. Um, so the last time I was presenting to the board in early March, we had discussed, um, the possibility of using the state trust fund loan program as a way to fund, um, some big expenses, uh, heading into the rest of the budget year. Uh, heading into the rest of the budget year, um, as well as a way to replenish some fund balance. Um, as was described, uh, back in March, that loan, this loan would be repaid within the revenue limit, um, of the school's budget and pay for it. Uh, so in working with, uh, Todd Gray and Dustin, uh, we put together, uh, our thoughts in terms of what would be an appropriate amount, uh, or recommended amount to borrow for that one thirty-eight bond loan. Um, what I passed on to you tonight is, uh, an example of a six million dollar loan. We feel that that, um, is a conservative estimate of what would be necessary to replenish that fund balance and give you operating funds through the end of the year. Um, the reason that we wanted to provide a conservative estimate is because, um, if we under shoot that amount, and you end up, you know, needing more, it could create, you know, a lot of, uh, hardship. And so, this loan, as I described the last time, has two really good features about it. One is that it has extremely, um, easy prepayment, um, opportunities, meaning that you can prepay annually without any, um, penalty. Uh, so if you borrow more than you need, you get to the end of the school year, and you realize that you, you know, borrowed a sufficient amount, you have excess left over, you can prepay that loan, um, and pay that now, so it, you know, kind of solve, um, sizes, so to speak. The other is that you don't need to draw all of it, um, if you don't need it. So you can approve six million, if you only need five, you can borrow five. Um, you have, there's, you know, uh, we have five months from the time that it's approved or closed to make that decision. And that will carry you obviously through current school year. Um, we'll allow, um, Mr. Lynn and, uh, Todd Gray to, you know, work, uh, with staff and with the administrative team to determine what you need through the end of this year, and, you know, um, finalize the budget details heading into next year. So I think it provides a lot of flexibility. What I've provided to you are two scenarios, one shows a ten-year payback, and one shows a five-year payback. Um, the first page is, uh, six million dollars in state trust fund, paid back over a period of ten years. You can see that that, uh, the first payment is estimated to be interest alone in the first fiscal year, or in the first, uh, calendar year. And then eight hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars thereafter for, uh, remaining ten years. So that payment would need to be included in your revenue limit, uh, expenses. Um, turning the page, we can repay off over five years, they would, uh, represent again, interest alone of two sixty-nine in the first year, and a million one seventy, one million seven hundred thirty-one thousand, four years there. Both loans, both rates, five-year and ten-year are at six percent. So in my mind, uh, you know, there's no advantage in terms of lower cost initially, um, to going with five or ten. If you went with ten years, you could pay back over a five-year period if you had the budget flexibility to do that. So, you know, I guess, in my mind, there's no difference, indifference of the fiscal reality of a five-year loan as opposed to a ten-year loan with the exception. Um, if the ten-year gives you more flexibility, um, if you decide you want that flexible, uh, option. I'd like to absorb any questions.
I just wanted to confirm what you just said about there would be no prepayment that would be, if we took out the loan, ten years, kind of gave it back in five.
Correct.
So, that's all I wanted to collect. Um, I guess the only other question I have, probably not for you, is, uh, we're talking about six million. I guess, how would we go about, and they had themselves processing narrowing down exactly what that number is, that would be five. So is that something, is just, for the moment, or are we looking at six million?
I think six million is what you're proposing, right?
We're proposing that, that the board authorize the borrowing above the six million dollars. If people have a better idea on that, obviously, um, when we, as we close out the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and see exactly where we, where we end up, with the, what, what level of deficit is at that point, where we are with, with cash and those types of things. Uh, that's one of the reasons that it's nice that we have a five-month window to draw, and I, firstly, I think of what I would Todd and I haven't talked about this yet, but what I would be recommending is that we borrow as we, as we need. We don't borrow among some right away. Uh, so that could be conceivably, we're borrowing for July, and then, then conceivably might borrow in August, September. Right, as, as, as would be needed. But again, you're authorizing a maximum of six million to be, we, we would borrow as much as we can at, at a given point.
No, just asking for a clarification. So, so we're authorized for up to six million, but we can draw o- over several different opportunities?
You can draw up to six million dollars, um, as needed. For five months. So, uh, but you, this is an operation borrowing, it's not a cash flow by. So we would be paying that back when you draw, when, uh, the district were, um, drawing on it. Uh, you would be adding to that ten-year loan as you continue to add to that. You can really, I think the reason that you would do that is because you'll, you're gonna clarify what that need is over a period of time, as, you know, you kind of, you go through the reality of what the budget is, now and then. So, right now, we're working on budget numbers, uh, those become known as time passes rate, so. You should be, uh, flexibility to not overborrow.
And then another question is, you would come to us for authorization for additional borrowing, or you would come to us to notify on some additional borrowing, or would you just continue to work?
No, the, the, I would assume that the process, the piece, my tenure here would be that, uh, as we need to, you approve the six million for us to borrow, as we need to draw, we would inform the board that we are drawing certain amount of money of that six million dollars. Because you will be, you'll be granting approval for the six, but we're not going to, you know, I don't envision that we would borrow the six right upfront. Uh, we would, we'd borrow if we needed, partially that's going to, partially that's gonna impact interest on interest rates and things like that, uh.
Yeah, and, and this, this is probably an important thing to realize as well, so the state, you know, they periodically, that they're in, uh, semi-monthly board meetings consider interest rate changes. And so, you know, once you approve the loan, you're locked in at a certain rate. So, you know, that would have, you'd have that a bit of that, you know, kind of interest rate protection. For how long can you draw this on?
My main area of questions is around process. I've read the, um, top ten, top eleven mistakes, I saw your notes and stuff, it's unclear to me what the order of steps is and where the board, where and when the board in the middle of those steps has to act.
Right, so, um, my suggestion would be, once you determine whether or not, you know, six million is the dollar amount, um, the cleanest thing to do would be to notice, um, uh, the resolution, the amount, and the, and, uh, the board's intention to approve, um, that loan. And then the board can take action on resolution.
So, do we have to have a formal, like a published notice?
So, once the board approves the, uh, resolution, that notice gets published as the first-class notice, and you have to wait thirty days from publication date. So there is, you know, some tidiness to that resolution being adopted, because as we discussed before, it's very important that we have those funds available to the district. Be it through the middle of June.
Okay, so we have to pass a resolution, that has to be published for thirty days.
Correct.
And then an application goes through, when?
Yeah, so the application, um, has gone through.
Oh, okay, application has gone through, but without the dollar.
Correct.
And the interest is calculated annually?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so it's not, okay, so once you?
Well, uh, the, the, the interest rate is six percent, and it's, uh, the six percent in the annual.
Okay, and if we pay it back more than, uh, what it says on this table, then, or, then the interest is calculated on thirty, then?
Correct.
Not, so we're not committing to, okay.
Yes, yes.
And you, you think we need the money, at least the first loan dollars by June?
I'm sure of that, yes.
At the beginning of June or the?
Middle of June, so, um, yes.
And then, once we do the thirty-day notice, how long between whatever follows that and money being available?
Right, so it, it's a, you know, there is, it's a process, uh, that is run by the, uh, Board of the Commissioners of Public Lands. So, um, maybe, as I said, uh, twice a month, they also require internally, um, the review of the Attorney General, the State Attorney General. So, um, you know, it's a process, this is.
Do you have a sense of how long?
So, uh, it should be between thirty and forty-five days, you know, but it's not, it's not set in stone, it's, you know, subject to, you know, their availability and, you know, their comfort level.
So what I'm gathering, we're in mid-April, this is it, if we're gonna go forward with the loan, uh, that's why this is on the agenda for action. We would have to approve the resolution today, or in a, if we can't do it today, then in a special meeting?
Yeah, well, I guess I would suggest a special meeting, wouldn't we, because you could approve it today, but really wasn't noticed with an amount, um, because we hadn't determined what the amount was.
Yeah, that was the other thing, I was confused. By, all right.
Oh, okay, so, that's give you another wagon, yeah.
No, that's fine, um.
You can have another meeting.
And that's.
Yeah, well, I just.
Wait, it takes forty-five, so we have to do a thirty-day notice, and that forty-five days could take?
No, 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 so they can run concurrent, so they would be doing their.
Oh, I see.
I'm sorry, yeah, their process.
So we don't need sixty days, we don't need thirty plus thirty.
Yeah, correct, I'm sorry, no, their, that thirty-day notice is going to run concurrent with their forty-five-day process. Your third, that, when your thirty days is up, they are going to, you know, be in a position to be able, once they know that you've gone through that thirty-day petition.
So if you waited until our A1 cow, that's cutting in.
Very, yeah, and I would say, just given summer schedules and knowing that this, you know, it, it's every bit as much a personal availability processes, you know, as it is anything else, you wanna make sure that you're giving them a little bit of time.
Just, um, a little bit more on process, um, do we need to have a specific, uh, format for the notice? There are.
And it was included in the back.
That would, that's fine.
And the resolution is in there, you haven't seen it?
Didn't see that.
And you have to scroll, you have to do a scroll through one of the attachments. It's in the loan application document.
Do we have any idea how much we withdraw the first time, or is that undetermined, yeah?
We have, uh, had sat down and, and started to calculate, yeah.
I would guess in the neighborhood of three to four million.
Okay, I understand, yeah.
And then, once we publish that notice, do we, is something with the affidavit, or how do we get certified, what happens?
Yeah, there is a process, um, and it's a class one notice, so I think that there, you know, there's an affidavit that's required, and that's also in the.
All right, so we're not taking any action today, but it sounds like we need to schedule a meeting. So I suppose a practical question is whether you two want us to schedule it this week, tomorrow or Friday, or whether we should wait until the next, next?
Tomorrow's, we, we'd have to know.
Just to be proper, you'd want to get in twenty-four hours.
Yes. Uh, we can't do it at seven-thirty tomorrow, no one's gonna be able to notice in the next fifteen minutes. Um, I don't know, we have four board members here, how about Friday? Is any time Friday, we're, is it in person or in person?
I think we can do it virtually, right? Do we need to be in person? And the resolution we would be voting on is what's in the package now, right?
Right.
Friday, fourth?
Friday, fourth.
Hey, four will work. I will make four.
We can make it later, earlier.
It's Friday's not an easy day, so I'll just make four work.
Or we can wait until next week.
As long as it's virtual. Four o'clock, Friday, virtual. All right. Maybe Danielle will be able to join us, we'll see. All right, so we'll schedule a virtual meeting for the board on Friday at four P M. to consider the resolution to support a loan, as per place.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, and in the meantime, you know, feel free to reach out, I, I have technical information, uh, you have last meeting, if you have questions, you have to answer that.
And is there anyone, I should have asked this before, is there anyone among our visitors, or Ms. Johnston, our student ambassador, who would like to ask any questions or make any comments? Okay, can you, um, state your name and address?
My name's Kurt, last name's Glazner, G L A I S N E R. I'm at nine four five West Calumet in River Hills. And the, uh, the, the questions that I, that I have is, I understand that we were at a fund balance of several million dollars in, in twenty-two, and we're now, the fund balance is nothing. Or in the hole, we're borrowing money to fill. Have we located where the leak is, where the expenses were, and all, everything on it?
And, as I reviewed the situation coming into the district, what transpired was, uh, coming out of COVID, there was a need for staffing, uh, to deal with some of the student issues and things like that. Uh, so there was a push to add staff, and there was significant staff added a couple of years ago, a little lesser amount for this year. Uh, the information was that there was out there, and neither the board nor the administration got any word that there was no money from the visiting manager, the visiting manager did not say anything, so they assumed, there was an assumption that they could move forward and add the staffing. Uh, and what transpired then was the, um, was the deficit that has been discovered, and they led along the way, pay raises were given and everything like that. From my experience in education, what basically happened here in this district is that the overall process went backwards. School districts will find, my experience, even discovered, then we would find that we had a need. Due that we did not have money, we would go forward with a referendum first. And then. If the referendum passed, we would then be able to do the staffing that we felt was necessary. What happened in this process with the business manager not informing anyone that there wasn't money. The opposite occurred, the staffing occurred. And now there's no funding and ultimately we will have to um. Probably go to referendum to to deal with it, so the the process went, process here went backwards. Because of of no communication to board or administration.
Board didn't catch any of this? It would.
Well, and and if I, you know, one of the other challenges was that the audit uh was delayed. So usually the board would rely heavily on, you know, what's occurred last year in the audited financial information.
Um that was, that was another question, what was, when was the last audit?
The last audit?
The last completed audit was at the end of the. Twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The audit was not. Everything that was necessary for the auditors to come in and do was not completed. By the business office. For the twenty-three, twenty-four, and so uh Mr. Gray has come, Dr. Gray has come in and has worked on that. And all of that information now is to the auditor at this point in time, so they have.
I think a point of clarity is the last completed audit was twenty-one, twenty-two.
Correct. Yeah, I got my use, I got my use confused, sorry about that, my use were confused.
So the last audit was twenty-one, twenty-two.
That's correct.
So we missed an audit and we're closing in on.
We're 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 closing in and finishing it, it's being finished.
How did the board let an audit not come through?
Well, usually.
I'm associated in River Hills, the audits come. Promptly, it just started Jen, for us, you guys aren't different.
So usually what would happen with audit is an audit would uh be conducted in January, February. And brought our attention, so after uh the budget already been passed. By the time that uh the audit would have taken place, the situation already uh had started. Um and then by not having that audit in place, uh we relied on uh frankly, uh some erroneous information. And making uh decisions about forthcoming audit. Uh as to discovering that that audit was not in place, that it takes some time, hope we did uh discover that, we did a conversation about. Why it was not complete, uh and at the end of the day, the board uh made sure that we took action. Complete that audit that's missing, which is uh close to being depleted, so we planned for future years. Uh more than that, at this point, I think would be uh going ahead of uh where Gus and Todd are and type finalizing. Their comments, but. The audit itself is not the guiding document that we would have used initially to uh start a logic.
That'll show a flag possibly.
I would like to have it.
The the other thing.
Wondering why it wasn't asked for.
Well, the the other thing you have to understand is Department of Public Instruction does not require auditors to submit their audit until December. Stick almost six months after the fiscal year is over, and lots of auditors will not submit their audit.
But we were talking twenty-one, twenty-two.
We had twenty-one, twenty-two was complete. Yeah, so twenty-two, twenty-three, it was not required to be submitted to the Department of Public Instruction until December of twenty-twenty-three. And at that point in time, that's when you, and and my experience was is I would get. The school district I was in, the school district of Partyville, we would get our audit end of December, January. After the, after the auditors submitted it to the Department of Public Instruction, so we would get our audit about six months afterwards. After the end of the fiscal year. And I understand that that may be different in municipalities, but that's the best what the governing guidelines are at the Department. And so it it wasn't aware, I, but half of the board, the board wasn't aware. Probably until December of twenty-twenty-three that the audit wasn't completed.
Yeah, and at that point, budget had already been approved, which, you know, is a really challenging situation.
I I can only speak for myself, um I've been on the board for less than two years. I did not know we got an annual audit, it was not in my onboarding. I learned we were missing an annual audit and I learned we were, I learned about annual audits when I learned we were missing one. Um in terms of budget, I think what. What's hard to see is all the work that's, that this board has been doing and administrators have been doing probably. Over the last year, as we were working with the business manager to extract information and wrap our heads around the budget. And it's, it's been tough, um in June, we got a preliminary budget last year. Between June and October, we we received nothing despite a lot of effort. And then got the revised numbers that told us we had a massive unexpected uh overspending, right? And so if if, even if you just look on board docs, between October and now, we've had dozens of meetings as we've thrown ourselves into this. And work to wrap our heads around it, so um for my part. Yeah, there's some dropped balls, but there's also been a tremendous amount of effort and I can promise you I will always be looking for an audit. In January, henceforth, I'll never miss that again.
Efforts are nice, but results are needed. And I couldn't send it between, I've seen her a couple times. And I'm, I'm not seeing that a lot of numbers at this meeting, at these meetings at all. And there was been nothing said about any of these numbers, we started last, last time we started talking a little bit. About a credit card that possibly four times the size of what the other consultant was used to. Our credit card use is four hundred thousand dollars and. Is that what I heard last time?
So Dr. Gray said, yes.
Yeah, and I'm just. If there has to be some big holes to be in this, we're at, talking about six million dollars and and your budget is how much, fifteen?
Eighteen to twenty-three.
So we're talking about a third. Um this is some big numbers.
Okay, Jim, can you state your name and address?
I'm Jim Bateman, twenty-two, twenty-six, West Harbor, Hef. Typically, I've got research, the auditors would come in in May already and start the process. Uh May of the year, four, start the process of of the annual audit, and that would carry through most of the summer. So by July, then they were just about done with their preliminary audit, so by September, October, we would get a. Picture, but evidently that didn't happen, right? So like September of, or I should say of June or July of twenty-three, that that didn't happen.
It was un-audited, so, yes, so there, if you look at the. Last ones, it had the audited twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget, then it was twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three, but it's set un-audited.
And the auditors didn't raise that flag with anybody but the business office. I change audit.
And I have to tell you, the 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 process for auditors has changed also, I know exactly what you're talking about. Early in my career, auditors would come in in May and do the payroll portion of the audit, and they would come in July and August. My experience for thirteen years, that was earlier when I was in other districts. My thirteen, my last thirteen years in Partyville, no, the auditors came in July and did everything. They no longer came in and did preliminary audits, partially that was because of their workload. Uh because their workload has increased with all sorts of other requirements that. Uh private sector and public sector have to, that they were due to, so uh. Yeah, I, it it was that way at one point in time, but that, at the end of my career, that's not the way it was being done anymore by auditors.
It was still done here, twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, still not that way here.
Okay, any other comments from members of the public? Board members? All right, we'll get a meeting scheduled for Friday and notice. Onto item five B, business office.
Okay, you um.
Thank you, Devin.
Thank you.
You had the um, can I send you some information, things like that in regards to the. Monthly financial things, I have been working with uh. Kim Zabel from Baird, uh reading one point. Uh as we were working on trying to forecast the end of this year and where we are for next year. Uh at this moment in time, I can tell you that. And this is just a very rough forecast right now, and we have not gotten well into the, into the budget. The whole budget process. But the projection is that we will, right now, the projection is we will have revenue of sixteen. Million eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand for next year, that is slightly lower than this year. Uh we will have expenses of. Right now, looks like we'll have expenses of nineteen million four hundred and seventy-five thousand. So at this moment in time, we're looking at, before we get delve into the budget process. Fairly deeply, we're looking at that we have about two and a half billion dollar deficit in twenty-four. Uh twenty-five, now. There will be action taken, you take action later on tonight. Oh, with the summer, summer academy. Uh that uh will have an impact on the revenue. Uh because, and I, I have no idea why. But when the summer academy was explained to me, summer academy meets the qualifications of. That E P I has for summer school. Uh that has, my understanding is, I was told by people who've been involved in it. That has never been reported as summer school for eighteen years, this district. That.
So we don't get F T E?
So you did not get F T E, you did not get additional state aid. That's been a, been not spent a long, long ongoing process. Uh it will be entered this year as as summer school. Uh it will impact F T E. It will impact. Uh state aid, so the sixteen eight thirty-nine is, I can tell you right now, that's a low number.
If you get point four F T E for summer, right?
You get, you take the total number for revenue control purposes. You take the total number of students, or you take the equivalent, because. Every forty-eight thousand minutes of summer of, summer instruction counts as one full-time student. Once you go through all that math, and then you take the number of students that you've come up with and multiply it by point four. Or I'm sorry, wait, yeah, by by point four, and that adds to your F T E for revenue control. That's for revenue control, for state aid, you get full credit for all the, when you do the math for all the students that you. That that you uh are even accounts, so for state aid, that has a. You don't have an impact. Yes.
That's just a point of clarification, are you saying that it was never counted as summer school or state aid or promotes state aid and?
It was never reported. When you report it to the Department of Public Instruction, the number of students that you had in summer school, it goes directly, it goes to revenue control. And stating, goes to both, you don't have a, you don't get to choose an option or anything, it automatically goes to both. The department uses that number to, for different calculations.
Can I just ask how you discovered that it has never been reported, because as a resident, I was always told that that was exactly why we had summer academy. And that that was why, like, it was promoted as a reason for us to utilize it, so I'm surprised that it hasn't been.
As I look at, as I look, uh when I looked initially at equalized aid worksheets. The last couple of years to get an understanding of where this district was at on equalized aid. When I looked at the enrollment numbers that are on that that worksheet. Uh when it came to, you know, summer school on there, it was zero.
How far back did you go?
Well, I was, I did not go back, I was told that this had not, but it, this had not occurred for eighteen years.
Okay.
So pastly.
Wait, I mean, is that possible?
Was that?
It's a new thing, it's like maybe.
No, and this, this should have been reported eighteen years, it might have been reported eighteen years ago.
So, sorry, I mean, is it possible that the last two years has been reported, but then the previous, you know, sixteen were?
I have not gone back sixteen, but I was told it's never been reported as summer school.
I I just have a couple, oh, and and also some hopefully historical, actually sort of maybe, uh Jim, to before Jim happy here. My question was that we were told about uh some issues with summer academy. In terms of D P I audit, that we were charging, we were charging, we were making money off of it. At one point, I wish Dr. uh Smith was here, but she might be able to speak to that, and then for some reason. There is some rule that said in essence, we can't profit off, but so the revenue that we get from it, I'm just speculating here. But uh and i- i- if if the point is that we're supposed to be recognizing revenue, that revenue would impact. I'm concerned about the implication, but I guess my point is, uh if we've been making money off of this, uh. Uh which is what I was schools, and that was yet.
We haven't been charging because that's, that's what's right, we stopped charging, then that's what made it.
Summer school.
That's what made it summer school, because you cannot charge for summer school and so.
We haven't filed at summer school since we stopped charging, but prior to charge, prior to, when we were charging, it couldn't be filed as summer school.
There would have had to been justification as to, would have had to show the reason. Reasons and the impact of the charging, what the charging was specifically for and things like that, I mean, it would have been, it would have been cumbersome. To go through it, it it could have been, it could have been done.
So now that we are not charging for this, we just want to make sure you understand, that improves our revenue? Or that, or that?
It will, what it will do is it will uh, it will increase the revenue control number, I had said that.
Okay.
So I said that I budgeted with sixteen eight thirty-nine, that's with revenue control, without summer school, revenue control pushed that sixteen eight thirty-nine. To a higher number.
To the levy.
Yep, okay, and it will also increase your state aid. Uh that you get from the state, uh which could have, because revenue control equals property tax plus state aid. It could have a, an impact. I don't, I don't know exactly, because I don't know how many students we're actually looking at, but it could have an impact on the tax levy. It could conceivably, depending on the state aid that you get, could drive the tax levy down, could increase the revenue control. But if you get enough state aid, it would force the property tax to go down.
Because you'd be getting state aid.
You could be getting state aid instead of of property tax.
What about expenses, I mean, does that?
Well, the expenses have been in the budget already, because they've, you've been, you've been running this summer academy already.
So when we stop charging, we should report this to D P I and we. Didn't tune out how much.
Uh again, I I don't have a a good estimate, because I don't know exactly how many students we would have been able to claim. I would need to know how many students we would be able to claim, uh but I would assume that you probably could. Based on what I'm hearing, some of the, most summer schools. Would probably be able to add twenty-five students or so. Total, that would be, that would, on the state aid part, if you divide that, take that by forty percent, would uh. They'll have an impact, it has a smaller impact on revenue.
Is that money we can claw, try to claw back?
No, those years are all the, the state has spent all of their money and tried to claim.
I just look back on um some of the D P I information here, you were, you weren't recording it. Uh for revenue control purposes through two thousand fourteen, then it appears to have stopped. And you were running about forty F T E, which is, you know, sixteen to seventeen. Students added per year um through two thousand fourteen, and then at two thousand fifteen, the district. And then at two thousand and fifteen, the district stopped recording summer school FTE. So it's been nine years? Eight years?
Okay, um, just real quick, I know that you made it back to two thousand and fourteen or eleven or whatever. We charged four hundred bucks one year for summer academy, the loan dropped. And because we weren't counting the kids' FTEs, that would be like back to forty bucks, I believe, which was forty dollars a month. We had charged just for fees and things, anyway. And then I know that we go back to Rosie Van, this is a bunch of time. I know we were getting two hundred, three hundred kids here for summer, so it was a sizable amount of FTEs. And we changed the curriculum completely to become more academic based, as opposed to just fun and game. I know that was a conscious decision, if maybe Andy were here then. Didn't know that it wasn't being reported, but that was a conscious decision that we were doing it for FTEs, not for the college.
Kayla Barishen, P twenty-five, Baltimore, West Magrave, at Park Blundell. I just went into the database into summer academy for the last three years. In twenty-one, which is supposed to COVID, so our numbers are definitely down, three hundred and forty-five. And twenty-two, we had four hundred and fifteen kids, and last year we had a little kid signed up for summer.
And again, you can't take those numbers as, like you lost, you have to, you then have to count the number of minutes that those students were in school and divide by forty-eight thousand to get a, an equivalent that for, that's what DPI requests that you have to, you have to do. So I don't want anyone to walk down and say, oh my God, we missed five hundred kids? No, you didn't miss five hundred kids. You have to go through the whole math formula to be able to come up with a number. But as Dr. Gray said, way back yonder, it was forty-some kids. And that would be.
Correct. Between thirty-five and forty, over the last couple of years I looked at, when you were recording it.
Okay.
Well, thank you for finding that.
But anyhow, I mean, it's, again, it's, as I said, these numbers that I gave you, sixteen eight nineteen four, are are very preliminary. We just tried to work and say, okay, what are the parameters? Those are, those are targets. Now, my challenge is, if you're into visit ban, your mind target is to get that sixteen eight three-nine higher and get the nineteen four seventy-five lower, as I go through the entire process of putting together your budget.
So I have a question about the nineteen four.
Yeah.
Because I'm, at some point, we're going to get more detailed information.
Oh, yes.
To look at past spending versus current spending, because it sounds like that nineteen four is, is that pulled from Skyward from past spending?
No, no.
Something you've newly built?
What we worked with, when I worked with Baird was, we provided the past week, so we provided the we had salary infringes from July through February, provide that information. We looked, we could see the pattern of that. So we rolled that out forward to the end of June, and then looked and said, okay, what type of, if any type of increase would there be in that? They also factored out of there the million dollars that we cut in staffing. So we did that. In my, in my office, we have been working on, on dealing with the breaking down the credit card bills, and breaking those down. Again, I just want to make it clear, someone said something to me, all the credit card bills have been paid. They just have not been recorded on Skyward. We are not going to rears on anything. We are up to date on that. But we're breaking those down and got, and got more information about that. We went and took a look at all our utilities and rolled those forward for the remainder of the year. We had just gotten the information about the bus contract, which will go up two percent. We factored that in to twenty-four, twenty-five. We're getting some preliminary numbers about health insurance we're rolling. Those types of things that we know we're rolling, taking what we, what we can estimate as expensive this year and rolling them forward to say, what, what will this look like? What will this look like next year? Like I said, this is a, this is a very ballpark. I wouldn't say thirty thousand feet, but we're probably twenty thousand feet over, you know? This gives, this gives us an estimate and gives us a, gives me a target as you, as I put things together and look at things. And we broke down what some of those other expenses are, so that I have something to compare. As I put twenty-four, twenty-five, I have something to try and compare back to what we are, what we are estimating, what we believe twenty-three, twenty-four.
So when do you think we'll, we'll get the ground view?
You'll get the ground view, as I mentioned before, you're going to get the ground view on the expense part in June.
Okay. I, and I've said this before, but I continue to be concerned that we don't really know what our spending has been. If we have a half million dollars in purchase card transactions that we can't categorize to know where, how that money was spent.
We're getting, we're getting.
To know where the cuts can be made on that kind of spending.
We're getting to the point of, of knowing those, those dollar amounts of that and breaking it down as to the type of expenses they are. The other thing I have been informed about, and I will be working on, I have been informed that over the last few years, Sky, uh, Skyward has a process in place that you can purchase through the Skyward program. That was not working correctly, which caused the increase in the credit card purchases. Because you could not purchase through Skyward, generate POs, things like that. You could not generate that type of information. So you had to be buying directly, and, and that's what led to some of the the increase in credit card purchases. So I am working on getting someone in to fix the Skyward process so that we can start going more with purchase orders and ordering that direction. So we would, that way it would all be in the system right away.
Do you know how long that error?
I was just going, the last couple of years.
And if no one tried to fix it before?
I, I have no idea. I just been informed about it, and my, you know, my job right now is to make sure it gets fixed so that we move forward.
It, it sounds as though we have some historical knowledge, comments from Kayla.
I had given him a break of what had happened within Skyward. So it looks like it was about two years that you're aware of, that that error was, is correct.
I'd say less.
All right.
That's after.
Got it.
How much, out of curiosity, does fix cost for Skyward? I mean, the fix, whatever do that we need to do to update Skyward, or an update, or to fix the error? I mean, is it a new some piece software? I'm curious, what it costs to fix it?
It will probably personally cost me a dinner. I happen, I happen to know a business manager from Fort Atkinson, whose last name happens to be the same as mine. Who is, is working with Skyward and much more familiar with Skyward than I am, and I have had a conversation with him. And he told me that he would take a look, and he believes that he can, says it's just a matter of
changing a setting.
Changing some settings.
So it's not really broken?
Well, it, it was never set correctly.
User error, okay.
Yeah, it was never set correctly. The users could not use it.
Okay, so they don't have to like reprogram it?
No, 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 this is not going to be an expensive.
Wow.
That's, that's, I mean, I'm glad to hear, but also, you know, it's a little frustrating. But I'm glad that you were able to so quickly, you know, deduce that was a problem and that it can be fixed easily. But just, it makes me wonder how, I mean, I, I just have to say, it should have never gone unfixed for two years.
Well, it wasn't set correctly.
Yes.
I'm glad you're still with them.
Yeah, but again, we're working on that because I know that's an issue with lots of people about that. So we're trying to get that straightened out and get that taken care of, and then work on process and procedure for what we're going to do with credit cards in the future, things like that. I mean, I do know that I will be collecting every single one of them before I depart to the thirtieth. However, they get redistributed come the fall. I mean, and I understand. I had the same situation. We didn't like using them, but in today's world, with dealing with Amazon, that's the only way to purchase. So you will not take the POs, you will not do anything. You have to use it. So there's, you know, a couple of vendors that are fairly popular that you may have to do that. But we will have, it will not be to the extent, get everything straightened out. It will not be to the extent that it has been, you know, the last couple of years.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to ask about the process of entering expenses very quickly. Because three years ago, we built a situation where we're trying to make sure that expenses that were being paid out have been properly identified, ledgers, were primarily, you know, cash or check payments. And what I think that we've been looking into, that eventually, my understanding is, we initiated, or at least we initiated a process whereby if there was an expense that was authorized, say, you know, the board votes on something, or if something is required under contract, there'd be a work order or some kind of document issued. And then it would be presented to the business office for payment. And we made sure that, what we thought of these, as the, the counter sign process on there, that there is at least one additional person reviewing those checks to make sure that, you know, they're made properly issued. And I guess that goes to the question of classification of expenses as well. But, I mean, my big question is, when it's a purchase card transaction and you're just paying something on a credit card, that process of paying those checks out, and you said that they've all been paid. So if I ordered, you know, a pencil on Amazon for a hundred dollars, you know, there'd be a credit card transaction for a hundred dollars, then Amazon will be paid on dollars. My question is, in the payment of that hundred dollars to Amazon, or to the credit card value, paying off the, the payment to Amazon, that hundred dollar check to the credit card company, was that being properly entered, you know, with, you know, the work order and signature, and was gap being followed, and those payments to the bank being made? I'm, I'm just trying to understand if we were following the proper procedures along the plan?
No, because we were not, and seeing you always ask, that always the question is with the financial statement, where are they and stuff? The thing was, we know, we were not journalizing those transactions. And we were paying them, but we were not journalizing them. And that's what we're in the process of doing right now, getting all the journal entries. That we, we, and, and see, the, the issue is, when you, when you're using the card, all transactions then have to be journalized. If we can use the purchase order system through Skyward, as those go through, that will automatically get reported, just as our payroll and stuff gets automatically reported. I mean, we know, I'm very comfortable with the year-to-date on payroll and the year-to-date on fringe benefits, because all that runs through our system. And, you know, those are, those are the numbers that they are, because it runs through our system. Getting this Skyward straightened out will give us, well, A, reduce the amount of journal entry we have to make, and B, will be getting things on the financial statements right away. So it'll be very easy for everyone to see where we're at.
Okay, Kayla, you have a comment?
Just, just so you're aware, insurance of the purchasing on the credit cards, for most of us that would have to do a purchase, it was never done without approval of a supervisor or the business office for all being put in. And once Skyward is working, you can purchase through Amazon on Skyward.
Okay.
So that, that one must still work, but we, we can't, that was, that's how we found out that it wasn't working, is we would put in an Amazon order. That would have to be approved at a higher level than we were at. They never got approved, nobody ever saw it, and the order would disappear.
Yeah, it would timeout and then erase it, yeah.
Okay, anything else, Gus, that you wanted to share?
I think that gives you a, at least an update of where we're where we're at, what I'm working on. Now, I understand that there's I understand it's a little bit out in the audience, it's frustrating about not having numbers, but we're working at it. I, I'm sorry, I can't, I don't walk on water and I can't feel the sand, so I can't turn out numbers overnight.
Thank you for finding those two things, but yeah.
If you want time to talk about
Todd, I don't know if you heard that, but did you want to speak about the updated budget items that were included?
Yeah, that's just, that's the format that we'll be working with. That's a draft. Obviously, we need to know what the loan is going to be and a few other things. I will say though, the, the, it says unaudited twenty-two, twenty-three, those numbers are very close. I mean, while the audit hasn't been totally completed, the numbers are in. So we're working off those numbers, but, but there's just some substantiate items or the, the auditors want to substantiate a few areas we're going through as well. Teresa has been going through, I didn't realize this, but she had been going through the, the credit card transactions and quoting them to the proper accounts. But that's not going to change the, the total expenditures. It's just going to reclassify them between accounts. So that column is pretty, should be pretty good according to the auditors. And then obviously, the, the budget for twenty-two, twenty-three, I'm sorry, twenty-three, twenty-four is based on some actual expenditures for this year, and then some forecasted out through the end of the year. And that other form is, is actually what, what you'll do to make those changes. I, I have the headings switched around on it, but again, that's why it's a draft at this point. But you can see, that's, that's the format that gets used to bake, basically take what you had approved back in October and turn it into, I, I guess, a more current or accurate budget for this year, which you, which you will need for the for the loan, for the borrowing.
Oh, I see. So we have to approve a revised budget before we can?
I, I believe so. I, 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 that was my understanding with Kevin, is that it would be good.
I just felt like we needed the budget to have some clarification before we could make a recommendation as to what appropriate amount to borrow. So it's not, I think it's good, good form to have that available for, with the application, and the folks at the stage are going to want it, but it's not important.
Okay, so it's, it sounds like it's just sound practice, which I agree, to adopt a revised budget that accurately reflects what we're doing this year, and that would support our loan.
Correct. You know, I think other conversations that you're having regarding operational fee as well as, you know, just public confidence.
Do, do you have a sense, Todd, of when we would have a final draft revised budget for twenty-three, twenty-four?
I'm just waiting on a few pieces. One is the loan, because I will have to develop some transactions that will get input into this, and it'll impact these numbers. And you can see on a few places, I have TDB that's to be determined. And that's going to depend how that, that loan, those loan transactions affect general fund. So there's not, not going to be a lot of changes, but just a few that, you know, we might as well get it as close to accurate as we can.
Is, is it something you think we would be able to vote on by the May one COW?
Oh, absolutely. Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah. I think, I think, I, I didn't, I wasn't aware of the recommended loan amount now that I know that. I, I, I could probably wrap this up early next week at the latest. I, I will probably do some work with Kim to make sure my numbers agree with the, the budget forecast numbers, but we've already looked at it together a couple of times, and, and things are pretty close. But we, I'd go through one more check with her, just to make sure that if anything comes up, both this budget Check with her just to make sure that if anything comes up, both this budget and her forecast budget, um, are pretty close.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right. Thank you, Gus. Thank you for the update. Um, also, we haven't talked about it, but I, I do appreciate that there's a deliverables. And a outline now for us. So if you haven't seen it yet, board members. Um, I, I'm not sure what goes in administrative content versus public, but, um. There is a deliverables list if you haven't seen it, um, responding to some of the questions that we gathered and shared. So I appreciate that responsiveness. All right, on to item five C, school perception survey. This is a possible action item, right? Anyone wish to speak to this? Or are you, is this Danielle's baby?
Yeah, and it's really up to you if you want to approve that now with this pending numbers or if you want to wait until Friday.
Oh, we can add this to Friday's special meeting.
So I think we should wait. And also I'm noticing that what we talked about adding the question about the sale of property. There, that didn't get added. And I'm just wondering if that was a conscious choice or it was just overlooked at it. So I think.
Okay, so why don't we add this to Friday's agenda? Move to postpone to Friday evening? Right, anyone opposed? All right, so we will postpone item five C and add it to Friday's, uh, virtual meeting. And I will try to follow up with Danielle. I know she misses us and wants desperately to be doing court work. But I'll ask her about that. All right, item five D crowdfunding policy. Allison?
All right, so to simplify things, I know we went through several discussions about this. Um, after connecting with Steve. Many districts do allow crowdfunding, but with district administrator involved, so that there's some oversight over what's being solicited. And for example, towards technologies or something, making sure the district can maintain whatever is being solicited as well. So the recommendation is simply just to, um, adjust. This policy was approved not too long ago with no option for crowdfunding, so to just change that to. Option two, which is crowdfunding by district. Oh, and then also included in the packet are some sample forms that could just be used by administration with the process. So that if a teacher wanted to apply, there's some sample form.
All right, so, uh, this has been noticed for potential to approve changes to crowdfunding policy. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
That's right.
All right, discussion?
Allison, I just want to clarify, your intention is that there's a choice. It says the district administrator or the board upon recommendation, we would demarcate the district administrator.
Yeah, I apologize. You can't see if the green option to.
So then also, we would select district administrator, not the board, right?
Yeah, sorry, yes.
All right, any other comments? Visitor comments? Ms. Johnston? Ready to, oh, Chris, yes? And then state your name and address. We all know who you are.
Chris Robbins, the nine oh one must get. Pills. Um, I, um, I agree with Allison that, um. To change the crowdfunding policy and I think it would be pretty onerous to have to take each request to the board. Um, oftentimes something like donors choose will have a propulsion where you can get more bang for your buck and, um. I certainly used it before in my own classroom to get decodables, very friendly. And I also think it's a nice way. To get community-supported buy-in for things that otherwise can't be afforded.
Thanks, Chris.
You have a question?
Oh, do you have to go over the process in order to, but it cannot.
So I think that your question is if we're, if someone were to choose to no longer do. Crowdfunding, would you have to get approval to stop the crowdfunding? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
I don't believe so. I think you would just seek approval for the process and then if you were, so then. Within that application form that I've seen, there's like specifics that are explained and the person applied would be held to that. Specific. And then that would be what would be approved. And so if something was somehow. Changed without approval, that would be a concern, but it would be addressed by the administrator who approved it.
Yeah, I think, uh, generally there's a, there's usually a end date, right? I'm thinking about these crowdfunding, uh, but okay, so then, okay. That's a good point. When does it add? But I think there's usually a.
Yeah, the one in the form says anticipated start date and end date crowdfunding purchase.
Thank you for that clarifying question. Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
All right, there's a motion to update the crowdfunding policy. Uh, I don't know what the number is. Uh, policy number six, six, zero, five. All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? And the policy is adopted as amended. Okay. Moving on to item five E, which is the second reading of the four thousand series. Of Neola policies involving support staff.
So I know we've brought these forward a couple of times. These were just the ones that were different, like the four thousand series. Um, I got feedback from several of you and so then I highlighted and made that summary of the changes. Um, so employment of staff or support staff was changed, um, to have approval in the school board. And then also we, Steve was unsure if we needed policy boarding one sixty-two, but because we do have a district ban for staff drive. Um, then he did run the, that we have that policy.
Oh, is there a motion?
So.
Second.
All right.
Okay, so I saw, uh, so I think Karen pointed this out, uh. If a position's already created. Do we still, and, and someone leaves, let's say, do we still approve it as an order? No, I'm still unclear about that. Isn't that forty-one, one?
Looks like the board shall include the employment and establish a minimum wage for each support staff member in that district.
Okay, so when, it's not like, oh, the position's already created, you don't need to bring it to the board, it would be, we approve every. New hire, essentially. Okay, thank you.
I would just say from a business office perspective, and based on where this district has been financially. That this is a good practice to move forward because every time you get. A name in front of you gives you an opportunity to question business manager, you know, regards to funding and regards to. Where you're at and just the, I, I know that some districts don't do it. I always did this, my board too, exactly who was there and it also gave some accountability. From a budget standpoint that gave the opportunity to have accountability on a budget standpoint. So. From my perspective, if you're in for business manager, I would recommend they were approving all hires. Thank you.
I just want to say that that reflects our practice and past policy as well, which, you know, absolutely, currently. But certainly before that, any new buyer should have been brought to the board.
But now it's.
Well, no, no, I don't.
Yeah, now it will be, so now it will be, we have any other questions about the four thousand series? Yep, any other questions or comments about four thousand series? Board members, Ms. Johnston? Visitors, administrators? All right, there's a motion pending to adopt. Oh, where am I? My reading glasses are the wrong magnification. Motion to approve the four thousand series staff policies. For the agenda for a second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes? Moving on to item five F. Which is a first reading of the one thousand and nine thousand series policies from Neola.
I apologize, Karen, because I can't remember if this was a full email to everybody, but just to clarify, moving forward. Um, we want to bring the policies in bulk, like every single one that's left. But since we had these in process, we talked to Steve about finishing up one thousand, nine thousand. And then setting some meetings with myself or other administrators to work with Steve. Through the rest of them and then bringing them all. So just to clarify why these are still on here. Um, this is just a first reading. I know that there were some, there were a few things in the FAQ doc, not a lot. Uh, so I don't know if there's anything that you wanted to highlight or recommend or had questions on for a first reading for one thousand, nine thousand.
Well, I did have one that I wrote a while ago, but then we, we. I think we voted to the table and or something, you know, I'm trying to find it. So I, I can't actually find this one, one, three, zero. And talks about conflict of interest up to fifteen thousand dollars, I think. I was in, I was in the drafts. I'll go back to.
So that was just changing that to fifty dollars to match?
So that's what confused me because I thought it was, isn't there one that talks about fifteen thousand dollars? It's like, you know, like, let's say something. Salting on the outside or something like that, or am I thinking about the wrong policy?
I think we were talking about the gift one, right?
Well, the gift one is, yeah, fifty dollars.
Eight thousand, one, three, two. It's the gift one.
Well, it's possible I wrote it down wrong, but I thought it was one, three, zero for fifteen.
You look at the FAQ document?
Well, they don't, it's two policies on it.
Right, because those are the only ones people have questions on.
Well, but if you go to, oh, maybe.
So one, one, three, zero is about matching that up.
I don't think it is. I think that's written wrong.
Well, there is a piece in there about. Fifteen thousand.
Well, okay, I'll, I'll say this. I wrote down one, one, three, zero, two, three weeks ago.
Then you're right, sorry, actually. So there's two pieces in the policy, but you're right, the top one is letter A.
Ah, that's.
And there's the fifteen thousand, the FAQ doc was referring to lower, like E. With the twenty-five dollar gift. So what was your fifteen thousand dollar?
Yeah, you have to go to under A.
A?
Right, uh.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it says, uh, specifically administrative employees must perform their duties and mandate that does not violate from a conflict of. Of interest laws pursuant, uh, to that statute by having a private, I don't. In, yeah, there you go, in an amount that exceeds fifteen thousand dollars. So, I mean.
I'm not even sure what that means. I don't know what.
Well, like, I mean, I'm assuming it means that if like, I, I know this was a big, this was a big one. A few years ago with, like, Abbott, where you would get paid as a principal or, or administrator and get paid by Abbott to consult, right?
I'm assuming that's.
Right, so.
I see.
And so like, I, I always had an issue with that, but, but I, i- if it's state, I guess I, my question is, is that fifteen thousand dollars? I mean, that might just be state law. It's like, okay, that's our policy versus, um. I mean, I don't know, like, um.
Just clarify, like, oh, that's two thousand dollars, significantly reduced to.
Sure, yeah.
And they're very statutory, so it might be that.
Is that like, yeah? I mean, teachers can tutor enough, you know, like, so I had, I don't, so anyway, it's, I, I was just curious about the. Reason behind the fifteen thousand, what that includes, does it include that scenario? Uh, I don't know.
The N S O S. There's a lengthy statute about, uh. Private interest in public contracts. Contracts in which. Yeah, the fifteen thousand dollars is contained in the statute. It's all very dense. I'm not familiar with this area of law. All right, um, now, of course, this is the first reading, so we can still approve the first reading without open question if we choose to. Keeping it in mind to refer it back before we officially.
I will be here.
We won't forget your question then.
I did, I did have a further question about that in particular one though, because we had approved gifts that increased to fifty, but here it's noted as twenty-five. And I think it's worth discussing, like, if we're talking about somebody making a financial, getting a financial benefit from an action, do we want to keep it lower on purpose? Or do we want to align the gift amount with this personal benefit amount?
What do we do for teachers?
It was. We would for fifty.
And here's twenty-five.
I would probably change it to fifty, yeah.
I mean, that would be my thought.
Yes, and change, make it consistent. Uh, frankly, in real life, I think a lot of families already reached the twenty-five dollar barrier.
Yeah.
It's a.
As long as we're not.
Yeah. Okay, um. Any further comments or questions? All right then, there's a motion to adopt a first reading of the one thousand, nine thousand series of Neola policies. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Sorry, are we saying that we won't have a second reading?
No, no, this is the first reading.
Yeah, yeah.
They will have to come back for a second reading, but.
Thank you.
At which time we'll have a second opportunity to edit in more detail if needed. Okay, folks, we're wrapping it up. We're at eight fifteen. Board method reports. Anyone? I think we've covered everything in the meeting, um. All right, item seven, uh, review of to-do items. I have made a list. I have basically on here that we're going to meet on Friday at four P M virtually. To possibly vote on a loan resolution and to address the school perception survey. Uh, and then I have on my to-do list that we will probably address the revised budget. For twenty-three, twenty-four of the May one count. Is there anything else that you guys can think of that I missed?
Policy one, one, three, zero.
Yeah.
Okay. If we forget, then you are always welcome to come back as our guest and to, um, participate in our meetings as a visitor. Admiratus. All right, future agenda topics, item seven B, anyone have any future agenda topics they would like? To consider?
I think, you know, talking about the school board school and. That would be a good thing. I don't know that we need to put a time-sensitive piece to that, but maybe it's something that long-term would be a great. Action for us.
And we are, um, I don't know if it's a future agenda topic, but we are. Going to try to schedule a, a more formal onboarding board meeting for the second week of May. To, um, and we're going to make it sort of a nuts and bolts type of meeting. Uh, Taylor's been working with Danielle and me. Gather materials and put together a, um. Binder full of information for new board members. Around all basics, budget, uh, board meeting participation, um. Organization, um. Access points for information, all the good stuff that, uh. All of us need to know. So we'll stick around Chris and Katie so we can schedule a meeting the second week of May. And, um, we'll start. That train rolling. Um, all right, item seven C, board meeting debrief. Anyone, Andy? Anything you'd like to say, Ben? Your last chance for a board meeting debrief?
I guess so.
Yeah, all right, good meeting. Um, it looks like we need to. Move on to item eight A, uh, which is a closed session. Does anyone, anybody want to move to go into closed session?
Motion to convene into closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five C, considering employment promotion, compensation, performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And section nineteen point eight five F to discuss personnel concerns related to a specific individual with. Which, if discussed in public, would likely have a substantial adverse impact on the reputation of the individual and section nineteen point eight five one E. Discuss licensing of a former, former employee and intended course of action.
Is there a second? All right, roll call votes required, Karen Gronwell? Yes. Andy Franklin?
Yes.
Ben Win?
Yes.
Charlotte Pennington Cross votes yes, we're in closed session, and for any visitors here. We're not doing anything after this closed session, that we won't be gathering to take any action in open session, so.
Yes, that's.
Do you think we're going to be coming back into open session for any action? I don't think there's any action we need to take. But so I just, as a practical matter. I, I don't know if it's, if you want to stick around for the. I don't know how long this closed session will be. But when we're done, we'll reconvene into open session to adjourn. Katie and Chris, you are welcome to join us.